Refrigeration and air conditioning, and I don't know, could you talk to them? I guess this is more on, um... Can you explain it to us? I'm not...
Okay, we have, uh... The air conditioner in the courtroom is out. The heat's been out for a long time. Air conditioning is out. The unit is old. I don't know how old it is, but they said the unit itself is rusted out. The compressor is out. So it's not reasonable to just replace the compressor, the condenser. So they wanted, they said we have to replace the whole unit on the first sheet where it has there. The last sentence says, "This match is not guaranteed to work, so we cannot promise this match of equipment." I called and called to them. It's Smart, Al, and he said, "Well, he's done this before and he's made it work." But they can't guarantee it. Sometimes they have problems with it. So that, for that part, that's not replacing the cord and calling it inside. That's $8,392, recently.
Pete, did you ask them how you could save money and they came up with that scenario or...
They know, like, put, uh... When do you use all around courtroom temporarily or something?
No, no, I mean, but that's about a $4,000 difference in this bid.
Well, you understand me? Okay, what I said, Carl, was that this bid was replacing the outside compressor, condenser unit and all that. Okay, so the second bid is replacing the whole fan and cord. Okay, what included in the first one is replacing that expansion valve because it's a different type refrigerant, R-22, R-23, R-27, I don't know, but one's different from the other. So the expansion valve won't work with that. They cannot get a unit that is not precharged in that size so they can put the refrigerant of their choice in. It comes precharged with the refrigerant in it. So they have, so they can't, they can't match the new one for the old ones.
So in this one, they're not replacing the evaporator.
They're not replacing...
This is just a compressor and they're gonna flush the system, get rid of that old freon and scotch, and they're gonna put this new type of freon in there with a new compressor.
Right, and the expansion valve too.
This bid, in my estimation, I mean, there's no warranty, and I can tell you from working on cars, trucks and tractors that when you start mixing that freon, there's a thing called black bit because those two refrigerants are not compatible. Either are the oils, and if you don't get every bit out of it, out of there, and you never will get it all out of there. And it like forms this black sludge, then it'll kill the compressor. And I, I just wouldn't, I wouldn't even consider that. I know you're saving a little money there, but I gotta, they're not gonna warranty anything and you had to eat another compressor.
All right, so you understand?
Yeah, I think I do, and that's what I'm asking you. Am I right about that?
That's right. Okay, so the second one is a new seven-and-a-half-ton heat pump unit, seven-and-a-half-ton air handler unit. And it has a, uh...
Lots of cleaning equipment.
With the heat pump, you have a supplementary electric heater. That's a heat strip. Electric heat comes on, the heat comes up, heated up. And it does say non-programmable thermostat. In other words, it's not a, not one to program, come on and all. You just set by hand, turn it on off by hand.
A manual?
Manual. So anyway, that bid includes removing the old system and putting a new system in completely. And that bid is $11,929.41. So seven-and-a-half-ton unit, that's a lot of it over $1,000 a ton. It used to be, it's about $1,500 a ton, which is mostly range, but they have to go up now three stories. It's not true to layman, it's hard. I did not get another bid. Just asking for something. I don't know what charge we have. We have, uh, no court schedule today, tomorrow, and on the 12th, and on the 23rd. That's one, I believe, I don't remember exactly, but I asked for days to schedule. Is that right, Robbie?
Right.
Considering that we might be vacating the building. We want to spend that money forward. What do we do?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, we've got a jury next month also on the 11th. Is that other room gonna be ready over there for us to conduct court?
Probably not. I just got a message this morning that some furniture will not be delivered until the 3rd of October. And then we have to get moved. And my point is this on the other bill. We can't fix a courtroom up until after everyone signs off on the building. We're not going through some changes with the architect and everything else to get their permission before we're moving into the building. We've gotta move into the building as is. Then we can fix the courtroom. So we will not have the courtroom ready by the 11th, I'm sure.
Okay, because I know from today through the end of November, because I know it's probably gonna take that long to get something constructed, I've got 12 court dates plus a jury. That's something to take into consideration, too. If we're gonna have to work out of the courtroom we're in now, I've got 82 people in there this morning and many attorneys in jackets.
And we can't open the windows.
There aren't no windows, I mean, they're all sealed.
Yeah, if it was really cool outside. Pete, let me ask you something, then. These units, if, you know, the courthouse, the court decided to restore the courthouse, could this unit be taken to the health department building and/or the special projects building?
Yes, it could be taken. It could be put in.
So would, we wouldn't be throwing our money away if at some point we had to pull it out of there?
No, the unit is, you know, it's a, it's a bunch of labor, but, but the unit could be used in another place.
And what, how many ton unit would we need over there at the health department building?
I don't have that, but it...
Something about that size, or would that be some...
I think if it were a smaller unit than this, but that could be used there.
Is there an option of relocating court temporarily? Do you know if that's possible, Robby?
Well, I know Judge Saxon made remark this morning that if we have to, we'll use this here. What are we supposed to do?
Just the county courtroom, not your courtroom. I mean, she's tied up in court. But I told her, I said, "I was coming over." She was welcome to.
Let me ask you another question. How long would it take to do this? Two, three days?
Indoor air handler has a production date of September 16th, 2011, and allow seven to 10 days after that for arrival.
So it should be about October 1st?
So we're still talking about having a real date?
You mean, nobody in the state of Texas has one that we could go pick up or they could go...
I don't think he called anybody in the state of Texas.
No, but I mean, I mean, if they're a trade dealer...
Carl, this is normal. This is his normal way of buying equipment. He'll put that on here.
Oh, okay, okay.
He didn't check to see if somebody had on some word. Maybe if he gets that. Put that note on here. That's how they buy equipment. He just put that on here for time. So whether he can get one, he didn't...
When, when did this thing break down? A week ago, 10 days ago?
It's last Monday.
Last Monday?
I think that was the 29th.
That was the 29th?
I stayed with TDCJ Court, right? We had TDCJ Court doing air conditioning out there.
So it's been like, what, eight days or something like that? A week and a day? Because it looks like we're already, we've lost a lot of time.
So if the weather gets cooler, it doesn't get cooler up in here? Because I know they still have any heat, but they do cool up in there, right?
We walk over there right now. It's not cool these last two mornings.
No, but I'm saying, as it gets cooler, doesn't it get cooler in there?
Well, I mean, we have no heat in the winter.
Kinda cold in the winter, but we had no heat. It's kinda cold in this place.
We haven't had heat in there for years.
Yeah.
Well, as far as the possibility of moving this unit to the health clinic, we're in the process right now of getting that one replaced through the Seco grant.
That's my call, I was gonna ask you that.
Okay, but you still have special projects. And you probably used to have a central unit, I don't know. Do you know, Pete, the special projects, did it used to have central and it broke and now they just gotta...
Yes.
Take the unit out of the third floor.
Yes, Carl, there's, there's ducts.
Does, does Smart have a bid in on the...
Pete, is my proposal on the health clinic? Yes?
Wait, are you...
Carl, Smart.
Is there, is there a way we could change the Seco grant? And you move that? You can't do that, can you?
I doubt it because they've already filed for the amendment to be able to use it over there.
I think we'll have the third floor, you guys use it.
Could we do that? Pete, can we move the unit out of the third floor down to the second?
I don't know, which, which unit?
The unit from the third floor, can we move it to the second? No? How come?
That's called canceling.
It's not used in the way it's in the playoffs.
Missed any major...
I mean, do we need more information? I don't know what to do. I mean, do we wanna spend, I mean, are we gonna be using that, if we're gonna be using that courtroom waiting to get the other courtroom ready, I mean, how long is it gonna take to get that other courtroom ready? We haven't even ordered furniture for it, have we? Or have we? I don't know. I know we budgeted.
I mean, it could be November before year...
Yeah, November's cold. Well, it's supposed to be cold. Well, it might not be cold.
But what if it's really, really, really cold? Because I know there, when there was no heat in there, I mean, the judge was wearing a jacket.
But it's been like that for years and years and years. Is there something we can do to keep that courtroom cool without spending this much money?
Check to see if you can get it to the third floor. The unit could stay outside. If you move here, see if we can move inside. Third floor. The unit stays downstairs. If you have something, you can move inside.
I can't, I can't say that they can take that either.
I don't know that they would even do that. I mean, if I was an area...
That's what they do, as long as they have them.
Yeah, well, you know, it's like giving advice, you know, it's, that's not...
The whole thing is, do we wanna spend $12,000 for two months? How long is it gonna, or three months? How long is it gonna take us to get in the other building? I mean, what are the temperatures, projected temperatures? I mean, we don't wanna spend $12,000 on something we're gonna use for one month.
Well, even if you're talking, replacing it and spending that kind of money, you're still gonna have to do something with the district court in the meantime. If it's as hot as Robbie says it is, I mean, for the next three weeks that they've got, being scheduled, they're still gonna have to be moved somewhere else.
Are we waiting for the equipment again? I don't know what to tell him there.
I mean, I just can't believe it's gonna take three weeks to get it in. And we've already lost one week.
Well, you know how the economy is, people don't have warehouses to stack for it. But yeah, he has this as a scheduling for it.
I wanna bet you money right now that if you gave me a check and you said, "Get me a half, seven-and-a-half-ton unit,"
Which one is in...
Right, right here, huh?
Which one is in Ampley Court?
That, and all this equipment that they need, I'd be back this afternoon with it all on my trail.
I'm sure they can find one, as they find one for something.
You know what, but we don't wanna front the money upfront. Not saying that they'd do it, but we are having issues with our phone system that we paid for upfront.
He's working on it.
What do phones have to do with air conditioning and district...
I'm just saying paying upfront.
Okay.
Pete, what do you think? I mean, okay, we can go back and forth on that.
We have, we have 12 court dates between now and November and one trial. Thirteen days that a bunch of people are gonna be there in jackets and, you know...
And those are days that I actually know of. That's not counting my CPS, TDC, or anything that TDC may have as far as the jury trial. You know, that did not include them.
Does it come down to, do we wanna spend $12,000?
I, I don't think we have a choice, personally. I mean, my thoughts would be to fix it. And I would've got him started on it probably the first day. Because I personally never been in a courtroom, this one or any other one, where the air conditioner did not work. And no matter what county you go to, 254 counties, courtroom, whether it's county court or district court, and they see it doesn't work, I don't care what they say, I'm just really not gonna be happy about it. Because you, you got a coat on and you're there for court and you're sweating.
Pete, are there any portable units that are...
Not for that capacity.
Not that capacity?
Small pool, but not, nothing to handle that capacity. He said 80 people are in a bay.
Even if you had three portable units in there, or, I mean, you know, the same, like, one in each corner, would that not? I, I don't know, I'm just asking.
Well, I, I think the ones she's talking about, they have an exhaust, and you have to pipe that hot air outside.
No, 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 I'm talking about like a window unit, but it's not. It's a, it's an actual room air conditioner unit. That's, it's like a window air conditioner, but it's not the window.
Right, but it has, it puts out cold air, but it also puts out hot air. You have to have a hose, like a vacuum cleaner hose, and you have to pipe that outside. Yeah, or it'll heat up the room. I have one down there in Pico. Actually got the experience on top. This is doing you no good because it's putting out hot air and it's putting out cold air. You need to put a hose on it, pipe it out, pipe that hot air outside.
The cost of portable units for that size of room would probably be in the range of $6,000 anyway.
Carol, you've got a jury coming in on the 28th, and you're gonna be sentencing, what, 150 people?
You get that many people and what's the body temperature? 98 degrees? 98 degrees times 10 people? It brings, I know we don't think about that, but it brings the temperature of the room up quite a bit. So if the court starts and it's 80 degrees, you put 80 people in there, it could go way up to maybe 90.
I hate to spend that much money, Pete.
Well, I do too, but I hate to sit there and explain to a jury and attorneys and judges and district clerks that we chose not to because we think that we can put 'em where? I mean, where are we gonna hold this court? Anybody got any suggestions? I mean, because this courtroom is not gonna function without an air conditioner. So the question to the court is, where are we gonna have court?
That's not the agenda, the agenda is the air conditioner.
I make a motion to go ahead and, and put the air conditioner in.
Okay, can I amend that motion to the state that, that we approved putting this air conditioning system in? After talking to Smarts and see if there is any alternative to get temporary at a reasonable price. It's been a portion of this.
I thought you already checked into that and you said there's no... There's no...
I didn't have to talk about, I asked him about what he would do. That's all. About with this bid, this is all.
Well, even if, if we go ahead and we say we're gonna replace a unit, if it's gonna take three weeks, I mean, or whatever, I mean, we're gonna have to move on it pretty quick because the court dates, I mean, I guess our only option is to push back all the court dates and cancel them. I mean, that's, that's not a really good option there either. I mean, I guess we could do that. We could just cancel the court dates. Until either the weather cools off or the new building's ready to go. I mean, what do you think?
Well, I think we have to do something. That heat should've been fixed years ago when it wasn't. They knew it was out. They knew the unit was old and knew it was bad, nothing to do with that.
I watch people sit there in blankets for years.
So, uh...
That's that would've, could've, should've.
That's right. Anyway, the only thing I was saying is to amend this so we don't have to go with this completely. We go ahead and agree. But the way to accept this, what are the options? If it can be reduced to change something that we can do to be more reusable than this unit, if we have to take it out, adapt it to the uni, to the building over there or whatever we need. I would just ask for an option, negotiate it. If possible.
Are you making that motion?
I guess we could, we could do that, but I, the way the agenda's written, it doesn't say anything about that, but... If we were gonna go ahead and...
I think you can't do that, Carl. It's a discuss approve, disapprove. If we give him some negotiating power and he says, you know, that if there's something else that we do to do a temporary fix, we can give him that flexibility. I don't think that would be that difficult.
Okay, well, if Pete's in charge of the buildings, my question is, why is he even on the agenda? He's in charge of buildings.
Because he said he didn't wanna spend that much money without our, with everybody's agreement because we're not gonna be there that much longer. Or supposedly not gonna be there that much longer.
I wanted the opinion of the court. I was hoping the other commissioners would be here so they could have their opinion on whether we spend $12,000 on that if we're gonna vacate this building.
So whenever you're gonna do something to a building and there's gonna be quite a bit of money involved, you're gonna put it on the agenda from now on?
Certainly, I, I'm not gonna go and spend any amount, like $10,000 without some other approval. I'm not gonna just spend it. I don't think I have that choice.
Especially in instances where it's not budgeted. Because the budget will have to be amended to do this.
So therefore it has to be budgeted. Can you, Mr. Bussman, come in here, please? Mr. Bussman, the way that this is written on the agenda, it says, "Discuss approve, disapprove, bid submitted by Smart Refrigeration and Air Conditioning, repair, replacement of air conditioning system for the district courtroom, second floor, courthouse, and offered by Pete." From what we were asking, what Pete was asking in his motion, Carl made a motion and Pete asked to amend the motion, okay? And Pete, were you making your own motion or asking for an amendment?
No, I was, I'd agree with the motion to spend, to spend the money to replace our expedition if we need to. I was asking that be amended for me to negotiate, see if there are other choices that were, for this equipment, could be used in another place if we take everything out of the courthouse. Just asking for permission.
He was asking for some flexibility.
Sure, yeah, flexibility.
Has the first motion been seconded?
Well, they were discussing it back and forth. He wanted, he wanted to...
Yeah, me too. You know, I can amend my motion too to say that...
Okay, well, you went...
I would want to do this as quickly as possible. And I don't wanna wait one week or two weeks or three weeks just to get the equipment because it's really not gonna do us any good.
So what is your motion? Just let us see motions, let's not argue, let's go. What is your motion?
Okay, I make a motion to approve this and to spend the $11,929.41 to replace the compressor and the air handler. And, and that we do it in a very timely manner, like it started on it right away because, I mean, but frankly, if we wait till, I mean, if the equipment doesn't even get here till the end of November, and she's already had 12 or 13 court dates, I mean, it's kinda pointless, you know? The only, if we're gonna do it, we need to do it very quickly, that's what I'm saying. Like, get the unit, and I don't see why it would take more than two or three days.
In other words, you're making a motion that, that this be done within a week.
You talking about the second bid, the $12,000?
Right, because the first one, I mean, that, that, that's not even an option. Because you have no warranty. You have no warranty at all. That's, I just, how smart would we look if we came back and said, "Okay, the compressor failed and now..."
I agree, I agree.
Is there a second?
All right, I'll say it.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda, the only thing is there is we cannot say that it has to be done within a week. If they can't have it here and it's not done within a week, our motion's no good. So I don't know about that, Mr. Bussman. What if they can't get it here?
That's right, because they can't do it here. They're gonna be stuck only with what's...
With a week.
With, with the, whatever's in this motion, that's it. If they come, if they want to go ahead and do it...
I mean, but if that's how it's been captured.
Let me ask you something. If that unit was for your house and they told you, "Mr. Bussman, it's gonna take two or three weeks to get..."
But, but what if it's not here? And that's the problem. What if it's not here? I mean, what if, what if they don't have it done within a week?
Yeah, I, I would almost bet money they don't have it down there at their shop, but I've bet money that it's in San Antonio, Victoria, Corpus, and they could drive it in.
Carol, is that motion captured like within a week? Because if it was and it fails, then we're gonna be back.
I, what I heard was to replace it in a very timely manner, and then he would prefer that it be in a week.
But they also accepted the second bid, which the terms and so forth are in that motion.
Yeah, but Pete just said that that's just something standard, that they punch a button on their computer and then it's on there. That's so, that's CYA.
I just don't wanna get it so tight that if something doesn't happen and it's not done as fast as we want it done, then it goes bye-bye.
That's a pretty generic little thing to put on a work order, so it gives you something.
But anyway, so, so we voted in timely manner, Carol. I'm just making sure for clarification purposes, I don't want to...
But you modified your, you modified the bid.
Okay, but what do you have, Carol? Because whatever you have is what happens. Tell us what happened.
What, what I wanted to put is that Carl made the motion to spend $11,929.41 to replace the compressor or whatever else in a very timely manner. So you went with the second bid for the $11,929, and you want it quickly so that it's not delayed.
Yeah, I don't see that it should take more than two, three, four days.
Let's let you step with whatever it says here.
So Carl voted, and then Pete's in favor.
And Pete seconded it.
And did I leave out any opposed? If I did, at least you might be with her.
They can still vote.
All righty, are we done with that one? The next item on the agenda is to discuss approve, disapprove of an order by Commissioners Court of Karnes County, Texas, calling a bond election to be held within said county, making provision for the conduct of the election and resolving other matters incident and related to the following holding of such election. Before we get started, I wanted to let everybody know that Tom Henderson, probably remember him, he's our financial advisor. He has been working with us along this whole bond election process with Tom Pollan, the bond election attorney. So if there's any questions, or anything going on, Mr. Henderson can help fill those in along with Pete and myself, who we've both talked to, Mr. Pollan, looking at this to get it out and going.
Okay, I, I think I gave each commissioner and the judge this document right here, which is from Karen Fleming of the Texas Historical Commission. And if I may, just let me read this. "This language prevents the county from using the bond funds unless they receive sufficient funding to complete the restoration." Second paragraph. "The subtext for Proposition Language states, 'The Commissioners Court of Karnes County covenants and agrees with the voters that they will issue the bonds only if Proposition 1 passes and the county receives a grant or grants from THC sufficient to enable the county to complete courthouse restoration.'" And she writes, "After complete, it should say a phase or phases of construction leading towards the full restoration of the courthouse, or they could just eliminate fee." Now, that's what she's saying. And it'd be my thoughts that if these people are giving you money...
that if these people are giving you money, that Mr. Henderson, the court, and THC should work together. Because they're giving you, what, $617,000 in, in Phase 1? So if they're giving you that kind of money, why don't you work with them and put the language in there that's agreeable to them and their grant funds?
They'll have to approve by the election.
Well, what, yeah, we have, that statutory language is what Mr. Pollan told us. They've never, Mr. Henderson, can you help us out? You were on all those conference calls.
Well, I don't know how closely Mr. Henderson may or may not have worked with THC, but that when they read it, this, this is their thoughts on it. This is what they would like it to say.
I don't even know if that's on, Mr. Henderson, so I just.
Oh, okay, well, I've never finished. I never had a problem with people hearing me anyway.
My wife says I like to sound long and voice. Wow, turning it up so high. First of all, let me say that, that my name for the record is Robert Henderson. I'm a managing director of RBC Capital Markets and we have been the financial advisors to Karnes County for seemed like forever, three weeks. I remember first coming down here and working with Judge Pierce. Gosh, 25 probably years or so ago. The second thing I want to say is, is that I am not an attorney. I do not practice law. I just do not get legal opinions, okay? Having said that, the judge is correct. I have participated in a number of telephone calls with Mr. Pollan, who, for the record, his name is Tom Pollan of Dickerstaff Heath Delgado Acosta, which is the name of the bond counsel firm retained by the county. As a personal point, Mr. Pollan was the head of the Public Commence Group for the Texas Attorney General's office before going into private practice with, with the Dickerstaff firm. In addition to visiting with Mr. Pollan and the judge on multiple occasions, I've also have visited at length with Mr. Graves.
Stan Graves.
Stan, I don't have his first name here, but Stan, on, on several occasions dating back to May, then most recently in August of this year. I know that Mr. Graves has reviewed previous drafts of the, of the election order. I don't know Ms. Fleming, and, but it is clear from her notes that she has reviewed the most recent draft, which was produced by Mr. Pollan just last Friday.
Mr. Henderson, do you have?
Yes, I do. I'm right here. Thank you. And the, the paragraph that she's referring to is the first full paragraph on page 3 of the election order. I'm guessing that everyone here has, at least commissioners and judges has a copy of the election order. Now, with that introduction, let me address Judge Shaw's direct question. Yes, Mr. Pollan is very cautious and very careful as to what legal language he uses in the election calling the bond, the order calling the bond election, because it is set out statutorily what language it can use, can't use. And that's not to say the court doesn't have some latitude. They, they do have latitude. One of the things that, that I would say, both with respect to the comments by, by Ms. Fleming here and the conversation that I had with the judge yesterday, is that I don't know that there is any perfect language that's going to, to take into consideration all the, the potential outcomes here. One of the things that we do know, that Mr. Graves has been very adamant about pointing out, is that while the Texas Historical Commission has awarded and set aside the $617,866 grant for Phase 1, there is no commitment for Phase 2. We know that the maximum amount of grant that any county in the state of Texas can get is $6 million, which means that the maximum amount of additional grants that current Karnes County might be able to get would be $5,280,000. Mr. Graves, to his credit, was very straightforward in stating that the maximum amount of money that has been allocated or appropriated in the most recent legislative session for courthouse restoration is $20 million. And that he is quite sure that neither Karnes County nor any other county in the state is going to get full funding for the balance of the $6 million cap that is, that is set aside for each county, not set aside, but is available to counties that, that apply. What he said the most likely outcome would be is that the balance of money would be awarded in multiple phases. And he gave an example, I can't cite, cite the name of the county, where there was three phases to the, to the project. One was to do effectively what Phase 1 here is for Karnes County, which is to stabilize the foundation and kind of stabilize the building, for, for lack of a better word. That's, that's the language he gave. And then he talked about Phase 2 and this other county being to restore the exterior of the building. And they had to come back in Phase 3 and restore the interior of the building. He said that he did not feel like it was likely that, that this county or any other county would get sufficient funding in the next phase to complete both the interior and the exterior of the building, simply because of limitations of state funding. Now, with that being said, there's a lot of discussion about what would this project cost. We know that three years ago, well, actually four years ago in 2007, the estimate was $7.3 million. We also know that over the longer historical period of time, contractors would build anywhere from 7% to 12% annually in for inflation. But recent economic circumstances have been that construction inflation has been nonexistent for the last couple of years. Prices have been held pretty steady. So I, I think that it's, it's not unreasonable to expect that if we were to build it today, that cost could be possibly as low as the $7.5 million, more or less than it was four years ago. Could be easily, you know, nine or 10 million. But we have to also think about the timing that Mr. Graves set out, which is, how much longer would it be before we could get the balance of the $6 million if it is ultimately available at all? And Mr. Graves was quick to point out that there can be no assurances that you would get any additional grant money. But he did say, under the best of circumstances, it would take two legislative sessions to buy any imperiums, which is four years, to get the entire balance of the $6 million if in fact it was awarded, just in terms of the appropriation process of the state. So when you think about how much money you need to ask the voters to approve, you have to think about not only what was the estimate four years ago, what might be the cost today, but also what might be the cost four years down the road, or possibly longer, before you got the additional grant monies that you needed. Consequently, I think that, you know, a $4 million number is, is probably, you know, a reasonable number to work with. Now, with respect to the comments that, that Ms. Fleming made in particular, I think that boils down to a political decision of this Commissioners Court. We don't know what funding is gonna be available in the future, if any at all, and we don't know when it might be available. So the Commissioners Court that has to make a decision as to, are we gonna do Phase 1 with a portion of this $4 million and, and bond proceeds voted by the citizens? Understanding that you don't have to issue all $4 million. You don't have to issue all of it at one time. You could issue $300,000 to match the, the Phase 1 money. You can wait two years and issue $2 million to match money that might be available under a second grant. And you can wait four years and issue the balance of the $4 million to, to, to match whatever third grant might be available.
So we can match the bond funds as we get the grant funds?
Yes, you could do that. That's, but again, that's a political decision. Again, and, and again, I'm not a lawyer, but I don't think there's anything in the language that Mr. Pollan has put together that can preclude you from doing that.
That, that's, that's really was one of my concerns.
I, I, I think that.
Because that's actually how we have to do it. It's in phases. And so the bond funds have to be appropriated as we get the grant money.
Well, we talked about that yesterday. It could go phase for phase, but it's just like you said, it can be a political decision. If there's a different Commissioners Court, they could give $4 million all at once or give none. Do you know what I'm saying? So it's not.
It's, it's pretty simple.
There's a lot of latitude.
There's a lot of latitude. But, but the, the two-edged sword that I mentioned earlier, and I mentioned this to Judge Shaw yesterday, is that what happens if you get a, a Phase 2 grant? Again, it's me, it's broken into three phases, not THC. But let's say that Phase 2 is, is either the interior or the exterior of the building, and Phase 3 is, is a reverse. What happens if you get a Phase 2 grant? And then the bids come in so, so low, quite frankly, that the, that the $4 million would allow you to complete the whole project without getting a third phase grant? Again, it becomes a political decision. So I think this language could possibly cut both ways in that respect. But my preference, you know, my personal preference is to, to view it as language that gives you the latitude to make the decisions that Commissioners Court needs to make as those grant monies either do or do not become available. Does that help any Commissioner?
Yes, but, you know, in looking at this, I guess Ms. Fleming just wants this third paragraph here. "After complete, it should say a phase or phases of construction leading to the full restoration of courthouse," or they could just eliminate. Now, could we amend this language like to satisfy our, because they are our grantor, I think. I mean, they're giving us the money. Why wouldn't we write it?
Well, you guys have two or three different questions, so let me, let me try to answer them. And again, I'm gonna preface it by, I'm not the bond attorney. We've got an attorney sitting over there.
You look like, you look like an attorney.
By the way, now, why you, we just met. Why you wanna insult me like that? That's not fair. I, I think, first of all, the Commissioners Court certainly does have the latitude to, to amend this order as it seems fit. Subject, of course, to, to Mr. Pollan confirming that we're not violating any statutory requirements with respect to what the Constitution requires with calling an election. I will, I'll offer this personal opinion though. And just food for thought. Her third paragraph where it says, "After complete, it should say a phase or phases leading toward the full restoration of courthouse," I would be concerned about that language. Because as Mr. Graves pointed out, and I've never visited with Ms. Fleming, as Mr. Graves has pointed out, there is absolutely no assurance, no guarantees whatsoever that there will be any additional grant funding. We know the current appropriations limit at $20 million. We've had Mr. Graves say, who's the head of the department that does this stuff, say, you know, at best, you would get a partial grant this year and a subsequent, not this year, but this by any, and then subsequent in the next by any. If we say leading to the full, full restoration of courthouse, I, I would be concerned if we would be assuring the voters that, that there will, there will be an ultimate full restoration of courthouse. And I don't think the court can do that because we don't have any assurances from THC that will be any additional money given. You see what I'm saying?
When, when you do Phase 1, it's in hopes of doing Phase 2, and then once you do Phase 2, it's in hopes of doing Phase 3. I mean, that's the deal. I mean, you don't wanna just do one of the three.
No, no, well, I, I wouldn't think that you would, but again, that's a political decision for the Commissioners Court.
I mean, it's not saying that the funds are guaranteed or are not guaranteed, because we don't know, but.
Well, here's my point, Commissioner, and, and again, I'm practicing law without a license, and I, I don't mean to. For the record, I'm not a lawyer, okay? But, but I have worked with bond attorneys on calling elections for 29 years in my career in the bond business. For cities, counties, school districts, and a lot. And we have two legal concepts that I think you have to be concerned about. One is, is creating a, a contract with the voter, saying something during the election process that a reasonable voter might rely upon in making a decision. And, and to vote yea or nay. And, and we have to be careful that when we do that, we in fact follow through with what it is that we, 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 quote unquote, contracted with the voter. The other thing is, is that we have to be very careful with respect to the expenditure of public funds. If we are not electioneering, we're not trying to influence a vote yes or no. We're simply putting the vote out there for the citizens to make a decision. And I would be concerned about leading, the language leading towards a full restoration might be electioneering, because we're telling them we're gonna fully restore the courthouse, but we are not in a position to deliver that. Because we don't know if we're gonna get additional THC grants. And the covenant with the voters. If, if, if this thing passes and this Commissioners Court then makes the, the political decision to issue some of these bonds to complete Phase 1, and two years down the road, we don't get any additional funding from THC, or four years down the road, we don't get any additional funding from THC, we may have some citizens say, hey, I only voted for this because the language in the election order said this was leading to the full restoration of the courthouse. Where's the full restoration of the courthouse? You misrepresented it. So, so I would, I would be concerned about that language. And, and Ms. Fleming, and I've never met the woman, but, but she's an architect. She's not a lawyer. And I would be more inclined to, to, to ask Mr. Pollan's opinion, of course, Mr. Bustman's here, as to whether or not this is language that might create problems, legal problems down the road. We cannot assure that there will be a full restoration.
He did tell us that, Mr. Henderson, on that one day over there, somebody had sent him an email asking him to change the language or do whatever. And he says, you guys have gotta be very careful with that type of language. You're creating something that you're seeking or leaving.
Yeah.
And he told us that he needed to stay with statutory language.
Seeking or leaving is a good, good recitation of his comments.
Yes, that's what he said.
But we cannot look like we're promising or trying to influence the vote.
I think that's a fair assumption, and I agree with that. Now, just explain to me, if you will, this is, this is Phase 1, because this is the only grant that I know of that we have is a Phase 1 grant. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's the only thing that THC has committed to this.
And what are our matching funds with Phase 1 grant?
My understanding is the county's obligated to match about 1/3, $300,000, and some change.
Okay, so if that's the only grant that we know we have, and then this, this is $4 million bucks on there.
The, the $4 million is assuming that you're gonna have to, that there will be, or I shouldn't say assuming.
Okay, now that's kinda misleading to.
Yeah, it's, well, it's, it's, $4 million is being requested of, of authority, is being requested of the voters in anticipation
Of full restoration.
Of additional grant monies from the state. But we can't, we anticipating that, but we can't assure anybody if we're gonna get that. And Mr. Graves was, was, again, to his credit, very adamant, saying, we cannot assure this. We think he can.
Where did we get the $4 million from?
I think it was a number that, that Commissioner Jauer had, had worked with contractors to get some preliminary estimates. And again, it's a quite frankly, it's, it's almost anybody's guess, because we, we don't know how long it would take to get subsequent grants from the, from the THC. If, if we were building it today, my personal feeling, based on the experience I've had with, with school districts and recent contracts on school district projects and other public improvement projects, that $4 million is probably more money than you actually would need if we were building it today. But if we're having to wait four years, maybe six years to get commitments of future THC grants, how much inflation are we gonna have between now and four or six years down the road? In, in my experience, I've seen architects put as much as 1% a month or 12% a year. And so we, we just don't know. An educated guess, sir.
Okay, so.
Carl, that, that's true. What he said. An educated guess. I've talked to several contractors. He put the plans, so I, we did have Stoddard, who does this stuff, figure. He came up with 800, 700 and $7,897,000 and some change. Also, in his figures, he left out $200,000, which is specified in there, to be put in for a contingency fee. He said, say, $500,000. He just put $300 in. I don't know why he did that, but that's $200,000. So his would have been over $8 million if he had put that in there. All right, so you go with that. Okay, the other contracts I've talked to, we looked at different, no, some plans. This is to be, be determined when this happens. This is to be determined when this happens. The owner's responsible for this. The owner's responsible for that. There's no, there's no, they took the numbers in there that they had five years ago for furniture for the courtroom. $48,500. They took the same numbers that they had for allowances in there. We don't know what those would be five years later. So from everything that we looked at, discussing with other contractors, $10 million is not an assured threat that we can do it for that. If we did it in 2012, we could do it for under $10 million. But if it takes three or four phases, three more phases, it most certainly will not be under $10 million. under $10 million. But $10 million is an normal figure, and so we figured with $6 million grants, $4 million is an appropriate amount to put in for bonds to substantially complete this project.
And that, those numbers reflect complete restoration...
But what the deal is, Carl, they said that those were weak, that $10 million, because Pete left me those numbers, and then he called those people. So, we would all, so we have two different opinions here today. They said that they felt like $10 million was a very reasonable number. And when they said reasonable, they said it could easily go over, it could easily come under. And I mean, we've just built, we know that things can happen. So, he said reasonable. Let's be reasonable. He was thinking reasonable numbers.
Right, but in one hand, this language here, leading towards full restoration, is misleading, but then, my assumption, this $4 million, if you're a tax payer slash voter, and this is what it's going to say on the ballot, is it going to have this language up here as well on the ballot?
I trust Mr. Pollan, and I trust Mr. Henderson, and Mr. Pollan is the bond election attorney, and he said it was just statutory language. It was not meaning, it was not seeking. I mean, I trust, this is what he does for a living. I see you reading, not trusting.
May I just summarize one concern that I think THC has?
Please. Just real quick, Ms. Butler, I mean, Ms. Carter, because we're not supposed to be having public comments, but...
I know, but Mr. Henderson's here, and...
He's our financial advisor, and he's here to speak out as he helped write this order.
I know, but I would just like to give THC only concern, and it might simplify things a little bit if Mr. Henderson understands. And just a clarification of how this reads, which is also, because it is possible to read this sentence, "Only if Proposition 1 passes." So, if the voters vote for restoration, and then it says, "In addition to that, in addition to the voters approving the bond, the county receives a grant, or grant from the THC sufficient to enable the county to complete the courthouse restoration." And that is their concern, that it almost looks like if the county does not receive a grant large enough to complete the courthouse restoration, that the plan is not necessarily to move forward. So, I think, you know, it might just be a matter of wording here, but this is one way to interpret it. Because it almost looks like if the county doesn't receive enough grant money to complete the courthouse restoration, well, then the court could just decide not to do it, even though the county approved the bond.
Well, Sue, she's reading my mind, because if we don't get enough grant money to complete it, I don't see that the county should spend enough money to complete the courthouse restoration apart from what Texas has told the Commission wants done. That'd be a late waste of lots of money. So, she's reading my mind. I'd say she's correct.
Well, and just mathematically, $4 million would not be enough to complete it if you didn't get THC grants.
Right, we know that, $4 million.
That's right.
But can we just stop? I don't want to get into another argument. What this is, is...
We're not arguing, it's, we're, this is...
Everybody's going back and forth, and according to the open, you know, meetings act, we're not supposed to be taking public comments and doing that. We try to accommodate people as possible. We try to be as nice as possible to hear everybody be said and everything being done. But we're supposed to stay to the agenda. That's what we're supposed to do. And so, let's just stay here and decide on what we're going to do. That's what we need to do. Please.
Okay, I will comment that I initiated this bond petition on the agenda originally, and I think we need to have funding available if we're going to restore this courthouse. That's why this was initiated. So, I think this wording is proper in what we've discussed with Mr. Pollan, and therefore, I'll make a motion that we accept this bond election as worded.
I second that motion.
I oppose, because you know...
All in favor, say aye. Now, any opposed?
I oppose, because, you know, it takes no effort, no talent of any sort to be a wrecking ball.
Motion, so motion carries. The next item on the agenda is to adjourn.
I'll adjourn.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
You're all to record.
Thank you.